I'm going to call to order this Lacey City Council meeting on December 1st, 2022. And if you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a published agenda, a consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda as published.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll interfere that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? And that motion, the university carries. We have the approved agenda and consent agenda items. And first up on our approved agenda is, under public recognitions and presentations, our Heroes Wear Dirt Award, the Lacey Water Department. Ed?
Okay, so these five guys on the water crew went to the American Public Works Association Conference in Spokane and brought home an award. So I'm going to read you a little story.
Can you please use that podium so you can?
I want to open this first. We wanted to share this with you. Here's the award. And why don't you guys come on up so I can introduce you? This is Jesse Ng, Michael Martin, John Flugenstein, Tori Crager, and Justin Bellis. They're in the water department. I'm going to read you a little story about a broken water line. Bear with me. I'm a little out of my element here. On Friday, July 15th, 2022, at 10:00 PM, a call came in to our after-hours standby technician for a water main break on 21st Court off of Golf Club Road Southeast. The standby technician, Jesse, went to the location, immediately began calling other technicians to assist with the repairs. John Flugenstein, Justin Bellis, Michael Martin, Jesse Ng, and Tori Crager responded to help. The crew excavated the location of the break with the Vector truck, that's the big suck truck, and throttled down the water flow and began to assess the situation. They found a six-inch, a six-foot-long longitudinal, longitudinal, can't say that word, crack in the four-inch AC water main. The crew brought a length of four-inch C-900 PVC pipe and some repair couplings and replaced the bad section of water main. After the repair was completed, the crew set up to flush out the main and blow it off and started to turn the water back on. As the valve was being turned back on, someone noticed water bubbling out of the ground a few hundred feet west of where the repair was made. The crew turned the water main back off and excavated at a new location in the roadway. They discovered another crack that required six more feet of water main to be replaced. Once again, they set up on the blow-off and turned the water back on. To their dismay, the water started bubbling up in yet another location between the other two repairs. The technicians went back to the shop to get more pipe, more parts, nearly depleting the inventory of parts for this size main. They found the main had a longitudinal crack and that an eight-inch section of pipe was missing, blown completely out from the bottom of the, of the main. The AC water main on this street is very old, becoming soft and is in need of replacement. But for now, the immediate goal was to get the water customers back in service. The technicians replaced another six feet of water main and then set up to blow off and flush the tournay water back on. A few minutes after the main was back on, someone noticed water bubbling, coming up at the edge of the trench of the second repair. Discouraged, the technicians started the excavation process again. They discovered the AC main had split just past their previous repair coupling. They went ahead and opened up a longer trench and replaced eight more feet of water main. Once again, they set up to blow off and turned on the main. This time, the main held tight and they were able to flush the main, backfill the holes, clean up the site. It was nearly four o'clock in the morning before the job was completed. Everyone was tired and yet relieved that the water main finally held together. This after-hours call-out compared to other more routine calls was very discouraging. The night kept growing later and later. The water main kept breaking in different locations. The parts inventory supply was nearly depleted and everyone was very tired. However, this crew works together very well and had the common goal of getting the Lacey customers' water service restored. These individuals, Justin Bellis, Jesse Ng, John Flugenstein, Michael Martin, and Tori Crager deserve a big thanks and gratitude for a job well done. They are great volunteers, dedicated to their jobs. We are thankful for their willingness to respond to after-hours emergencies. It is nice to work with such quality people that work hard and do whatever they can to minimize disruptions in utility service for Lacey citizens regardless of the time of day. And I will tell you that this isn't just about this water break. This is about every job they do. This is how these guys are. And they handle a lot of bigger breaks. This one was just particularly discouraging because it just kept breaking and breaking. They thought they were done. Oh, we're not done. They thought they were done. Oh, they're not done. So, so I'm very proud of them, but this is who they are. This is how they work every day. So, we just wanted to thank them.
I didn't fix anything.
Also, I'd like to share a couple things. One, you know, as I'd communicated, you know, we're very thankful for these guys, but this also recognizes the entire standby program. You know, they do this all the time. They're on standby. There's one person on standby. You know, like when Jesse was on standby, a problem occurs and then they start calling people out. And, you know, without hesitation, so this was a Friday night, so when other people were at home watching TV all nice and comfy or out at a restaurant or doing whatever, you know, they're called out, they go out, they respond, they take care of it. And in this case, they're working until like four in the morning. So the level of dedication and service that they provide and that everybody on standby provides, you know, this award somewhat symbolizes the success of the whole program, the dedication of, of all these folks as, as well as everybody on standby. You know, personally, you know, I want to thank them all, thank them all in Spokane at the award ceremony. The Heroes Wear Dirt Award was specifically created for recognition of field personnel who typically are under-recognized. And, and this is an award that is not awarded every year. So it, you know, this was obviously, you know, a long night, special circumstance. We're thrilled to see them recognized, you know, throughout the state for this award. So anyway, thank you all.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Awesome job. Thank you.
Good job, Justin.
So that was, that was very cool. And it just goes a testament of all the great public servants working for the, the city of Lacey. So I'm not surprised to see them awarded from a statewide award. Next up is a presentation from the Fred U. Harris Lodge.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, and, you know, of course, Chief. I'm not going to take, you know, too much time because I have a meeting to go to tonight, so I'm not dressed for you guys. I'm dressed because I have a meeting. So, um, in recognition of all your support I received from the city of Lacey, the council member for, for Fred U. Harris Lodge, number 70, Juneteenth, it was outstanding. I never received so much support in this community. And we've been, like I say, we've been doing Juneteenth for 41 years, coming up on 42. But this group, uh, team helped me out so much. And so I'd like to present a plaque.
You know, he calls me up to say, well, I want you to, to speak because you speak well. But he said everything that needed to be said. So there's nothing else to say. But I, I will be in that same meeting. I decided to come casual so that I can be mixed in with the, with, with the group. But we certainly want to, want to take this opportunity to appreciate the recognition that you've given to Fred U. Harris Lodge and the support and the participation in our Juneteenth picnic. We look forward to working with you in the future. And, and, and it shows that the city of Lacey is, is really into diversity and supporting good causes and community events. So thank you for, for what you've done and in support of our event.
And the plaque reads, "In our greatest appreciation, we hereby present the city of Lacey with the," I got my glasses, "so with the award of recognition for outstanding commitment and dedication service to Fred U. Harris Lodge, number 70."
So if we could do the same thing.
Well, big, uh, thank you to Fred U. Harris Lodge, number 70, taking part in the Juneteenth celebration, I think was as much of our honor as, as, you know, anything that we've taken part in. And the one thing I, I remarked at the time was, I'm sorry it took 40 years for us, for this community to be a part of this amazing celebration. And we do look forward to many more years of collaborating. And I know that only great things are in store for, as we continue this great relationship. So, so thank you. So next up on our agenda is a public comment. We didn't have anyone signed up for public comment and we didn't have any written public comment. But is there anyone wishing to address this council? Please come on up. Sure. Please come up and introduce yourself and please keep your comments about three minutes.
Okay. All right. Hello. My name is Robert Moreno and I am the Director of Clean Energy and Infrastructure at the Thurston Climate Action Team. And so I came first. I just want to give you all appreciation for doing public service. I think it's a hard, thankless job, and I think that each of you gives a lot to do that. I have no doubt about that from working with other public servants around the county in the last several months. So thank you for that. That's number one. Number two, thank you for getting a sustainability coordinator into the budget. I think that's an excellent step. It means that all four of our main jurisdictions in the county are going to have at least one staff dedicated to that project. And that's excellent. Number three, I was a little unclear if that staff person will have a budget to work with. I know that there is some budget funding for climate stuff around EV charging and LEDs. But at, at Thurston Climate Action Team, we've been asking each of the main jurisdictions to together put in $3 million for climate action for the next budget. So I, I would request, and I know it's, it's late in the game on the budget, but I would request that you consider putting in $750,000 for, for budget expenses moving forward. All right. And then the last thing is that, as I was trying to navigate the budget, it was a little unclear to me exactly what the climate dollars were. And so if I'm paid to look at the budget and try and figure that out, I can only imagine how difficult it would be for someone that's trying to do it on the side, you know, as just a city, as a, a resident. So if you all would be willing to, to push for some very simple clarity, but maybe having a kind of a more in-depth climate section on how you're going to reach 45% reduction in, in greenhouse gas emissions by 2030, right? That's a heavy lift. So what's the roadmap to get there? What are the dollars? And then what are the CO2 projected savings per project? And I don't want to put a lot of, you know, more work on staff. It could be a very simple little Excel spreadsheet, you know, one page, two pages, whatever. But just if we could see that, it would be so helpful. And the last thing is, my organization would be happy to help with any part of that that we could, if, you know, wherever we might fit, where it'd be useful. So thanks to all of you. And that's all I got. Best wishes on your next chapter and have a good night.
Thank you. Appreciate that. So, talking about budget, we're going to go right into our final 2023 budget hearing. And I think you've given some good advice for our, our next budget that we'll hopefully take into account for next time. But Troy?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Ryder. Good evening, council. Welcome to the final budget hearing for 2023. Just give me a moment here and I'll get a short presentation started. Okay. Sorry about the delay. I'll just be very brief in my comments. We've had, you know, several discussions and you've seen lots of presentation and lots of numbers. But I do want to share for those in the audience that may be looking at this for the first time. So the total proposed budget for 2023 is about $178.6 million. This is a decrease of about 16.00. of about $16.9 million. In general, the, the main reasons for the decrease are related to one-time capital projects that were in 2022, but not in the 2023 budget. And there's a lot of associated transfers of dollars between funds because of moving reserve dollars, one-time reserve dollars for those. So this is not an indication that there's any reduction in service or workforce at all. It's primarily related to capital. Same information in graph form. Sometimes it's just a little bit easier to look at it from this standpoint. Again, total budget being proposed is 178.6 million. Really what's significant here is I think our commitment to investments in the, into the community, mostly seen in the capital projects, you know, $20.1 million being reinvested back into the community. Lots of reinvestment in terms of the utility funds, lots of improvements to water quality and, and the nature. I do want to focus on a general fund. Of course, this is where the services I think citizens most identify with are funded from. So the general fund budget is $60.6 million for 2023, a reduction of $6.4 million are really the, the same impacts of the one-time capital not being carried over to 2023 is occurring here in the general fund as well. So again, a $60.6 million general fund budget. Paying for all that general fund service, we do have a balanced budget, so revenues do equal expenditures. Again, a $60.6 million general fund budget. I really want to, want to point out here on this slide is the top four categories taxes. You could see that's where the, you know, vast majority of increase is. This really isn't indication, isn't an indication of what we think may happen in the economy. This is more of a catch-up to the trends that we've seen here recently. I think we've all been a little bit surprised at the strength and resilience of the economy throughout the pandemic. So this is really catching up with trend analysis versus any sort of expectation of actual economic growth. I do want to follow up on a couple items from our last hearing, provide the council and the public just a little bit more information. We had a really good conversation about tuition reimbursement. We have $10,000 being proposed for 2023. I do want to provide a little bit of background information as to what we've seen so far in 2022. Again, in 2022, we had the same level of budget. We've spent about $5,800 so far this year. Three employees have taken advantage of this program for an average reimbursement of just under $2,000. So this again is a program that's really just getting started this year. We do think the $10,000 level is adequate for now, but as we indicated last week, we certainly appreciate the council's support of this program. We'll keep a watchful eye on this as certainly the demand may, may go up in this program. So we'll watch that throughout 23 and if adjustment is needed, we'll certainly come back to the council in terms of a budget amendment for next year. I also want to follow up a little bit more on the utility tax discussion. This is an issue that the, the mayor asked about in terms of, you know, what has been the growth of utility tax on the city-owned utilities. And we've had pretty significant growth over the last 10 years, as you could see from this slide. Certainly what's impacted this growth is, you know, growth to the, the base itself. So we are a growing city, growing certainly faster than the average city in Washington. Also, we do have rate increases that have impacted this, this trend as well. But specifically, last week, the, there was a question about, you know, what are other cities doing in terms of, you know, what an average utility tax might be in Washington state? So I went out and gathered the information from the AWC Tax and User Fee Survey. This is from 2022. This is obviously a very busy slide. This is 128 cities in Washington responded to the water utility tax portion of the survey. You could certainly see where the 6% line is. So the 6% line is, there is a statutory maximum on utility tax on all other utilities, but there is not a statutory maximum for utility tax on water, sewer and stormwater. So that's why you're seeing quite a difference. But you could certainly see many cities charge 6%, including the city of Lacey and its, its neighbors. But you could see everywhere from 41% down to nearly zero. I actually think those are typos. It was like .15%. I'm guessing that was probably 15%, but I'm just going by what the survey results were. Was there a question, council member?
Yeah. What's the x-axis?
The x-axis is actually every city. I didn't want to list out.
It's just, it's not any sort of data. It's just, we need a spot for all the dots?
Yeah, it's each one of those dots. So rather than list the 128 cities, a little more clear, leaving a blank. So I apologize for that. But yeah, that is basically the cities' names throughout the bottom there. So like I said, quite a, quite a range there in terms of what, what cities are, are levying in terms of utility tax for water. For the sewer utilities, a little bit less respondents. Oh, I'm sorry.
Just curiosity. You, you said you think those ones with zero are probably mistakes. Do you think that 41% is also a mistake? Is it really 4.1 and they, it's a misprint? Because hard to imagine they're charging a 41% tax.
Um, that's a great question. I think it might be less likely that's a typo. I'm not exactly familiar with the town of Wilbur, but I, I think it's probably a population of something under $1,000 or 1,000 and very limited revenue sources for those smaller towns to, you know, the top three here are all very small towns. So.
Probably 41% of a very small number too, so.
So, yeah, I, I, again, I think it's less likely that's a typo, but I, I actually didn't go to their budgets and look. For sewer, again, looking at the survey results, this is 122 responding cities. Again, you could see most of the cities charged right along that 6% area. Oh, well, thank you, Shannon. She went to the town of Wilbur's website and it is indeed 41%. So thank you for the assist. So for the city utility tax, again, you have, you know, Wilbur at the top and again, smaller cities are charging what, you know, is a much higher rate. But again, you know, most cities are right in at that 6% range. And then finally, stormwater, far fewer respondents just because stormwater util, requirements really only impact the, the larger cities in Washington. So this is about 60 respondents. Again, you could see that many of the cities are right on that 6% area. A little bit of a change, you see the city of Vancouver at almost 29%. And that's a significant city. And that's the third biggest city in, in the state. And then city of Bremerton and city of Kennesaw. So we're, you know, I, you know, if you looked at the average, it's certainly higher than 6%, but I would also say that it is, seems to be pretty common that cities are charging right along that 6% area. So with that, I will turn this back over to the council. And of course, the purpose of tonight's hearing is to hear any public comments on the budget as well as receive any direction from the council. And this is really the council's final opportunity to provide direction as you will be hopefully adopting the 2023 budget on December 15th. So back to you.
I will open up this public hearing on our final 2023 budget. Mr. City Manager, I think you have something. Is there, is there anyone else from the public wishing to address the council on the budget? No?
So one thing that we've discussed at council, it's still an open question, and that is our partnership with the Franz Anderson Project. At one point, there was a discussion about ARPA funds and if we were going to provide 3.5 million for that commitment. Regional Housing Council has discussed this project. They have asked that the, the city is going to be a willing partner in that project. I would point out, this is one of the strategic goals that the council did provide in terms of how do we invest and create resources for permanent supportive housing. There was some confusion about is it ARPA or is it other dollars? I guess my recommendation would be at least to provide 3.5 million in the budget. It would some point have to come back to council as, or review the project, have a full understanding what that project is. And then I think it would include an interlocal agreement if we did a partnership with Thurston County, Tumwater Olympia, and if it's going to go to the state for some kind of application. And I'm looking at Rick, maybe have some additional details on what that would look like.
Can you explain why we need to make this decision now?
Yes, because it's due to timing of, of potential state funding dollars where the idea is to put together a local leverage, a match of funds. And, and then with that, go out for an RFP for a developer. And what the idea is that developer would be selected, utilize this pool of local match funds, and then make application to either a housing trust fund or low-income tax credits for the remainder to fully develop the project. And so with the cycle of funding, I believe, trying to go out for an RFP at some point in, in the first of the year, and I'm not sure exactly which month, but I think in February or March is when the applications are due for the state, additional state funding. And so that's why there's this request to try to get some type of level of commitment for the local regional match.
We're still in the, the budget.
Hearing.
Hearing. So it'd be after I close it, right? Questions?
Well, yeah, I mean, more comment than question, really. I'm very uncomfortable with adding this to the budget before we've had any meaningful discussion of it. We've talked about having a work session on this. We've not yet had that. I'm very uncomfortable with adding to the budget before I know what the money's going to.
Is there, is there any way we can view the project? I mean, I've, I've gone online and looked at it and to see, you know, if I could get an idea of the scope of the project, but I don't, I don't, I don't remember ever seeing anybody bring anything before this council that kind of describes the project and kind of gives an outline of, 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 you know, the, the, the scope of the project, what it's going to look like in the end. I don't, I don't, I don't think we've seen anything about this project yet.
We haven't.
The, the conversations and the general overview of the project has primarily been presented at the Regional Housing Council, but I can ask Regional Housing Council tech team staff to come to a work session with the council to give a, a, or detailed description of the project and the timing and cycle and what that project would look like. And, and the, the funding, overall funding proposal. What we're looking at right now is trying to identify it in the, the budget for next year. And then we'd have those dollars in place, subject to final council action to distribute those funding to the project based on that conversation at a future work session.
So Rick, is this somewhat similar to the way that we developed the MOU around the permanent supportive housing that we're building where we put together the bones of an MOU that was sort of broad, indicating that we intended to come to a more specific agreement when more details were available? This would just be the first step and we would get more details in the future?
Yes, but this actually really started with about a year ago, talking about a permanent supportive housing development framework and, and strategy. And at that time, utilizing various funding source or identify potential for funding sources. And so with that identified, and that's as the city manager mentioned earlier, at first was looking at how to use ARPA funds or other type of funds that were available to the local jurisdictions. As time went on and things evolved, and part of that process and this, this work for permanent supportive housing, we were looking at the 8200 Quinault Drive site, but then with the state right-of-way initiative that came in, that actually started providing funds for that particular project. So that freed up the local dollars to do an additional project, which is something that we look at as needed in terms of the long-term framework of building more additional permanent supportive housing units. So this particular proposal has developed in the last couple of months. And it's a timing with the state funding cycle for competitive grants for the additional funds.
So this is essentially just earmarking money. It's not committing it, right? Because we take action at a later date, or we could just kill it at a later date too, right? If we didn't like the specifics, correct?
Correct. That's, that's, I think what is, because if earmarking it in the budget, but with the direction that there would need to be more discussion before it's actually executed.
But this is saying, hey, we recognize this as part of our strategic plan as, as a, as a council. We're, we're willing to, you know, have this money available to show that we really, our, our words have meaning and, and, right?
Yeah, to define those budget, the, the dollars are available in the budget and, and then getting more information before they're actually distributed.
Okay. Rick, what, your memory is a little better than mine. Could you provide just a quick, rough sketch of what this project looks like in terms of the tiny house village and the permanent supportive housing?
So the Franz Anderson parcels were acquired with, by the city of Olympia roughly eight months ago or so. And part of that was some funding partnerships with the county. So they secured the property with the idea that this would be a future location for providing shelter services. Then wasn't quite defined what that looked like yet. Then with the right-of-way initiative money that came out, and one of the things that Olympia was looking at is a tiny home, house village, with the right-of-way initiative dollars coming out, that's another piece of that whole funding package that the state is making available to Thurston County region, is to fund the development of the 50-unit tiny house village. Now, the Franz Anderson Road project site has two halves on the side of a road. The other half was then identified with this additional dollars that freed up the local, excuse me, freed up the local dollars. There's an opportunity to develop the other side of the whole, the road with a permanent supportive housing facility that could be, add more of those type of units into our infrastructure package. So there's two halves of this project. One is the 50-unit tiny home village to deal with immediate needs of the, of the right-of-way initiative and then long-term asset for, again, providing different levels of, of shelter for different needs for the unhoused community. And then the longer-term solution with the permanent supportive housing project that would be somewhat similar to what we see with Unity Commons there on Martin Way that was developed in partnership with Lehigh.
I'm looking at some information. I can just add some detail. I think they're looking at a 40 to 70 multifamily unit project, about a $23 million cost. And it'd primarily be low-income, single adults, more than likely homeless at entry, but then hopefully provide stability and also additional supportive services. And then the idea would be to take the partnership with the jurisdictions and apply for state funds, assuming a developer responded to the request for proposals.
Do we have any information on what other jurisdictions are putting in? I mean, we're asking for three and a half million in our budget. Do we know what anyone else is doing?
The, going back and looking at the, it looks like the city manager may have that information handy.
So the county is putting in 3.5. Tumwater is 550,000. Olympia is 500,000. The housing trust fund will be tapped for 3 million. And then they're also looking for low-income housing tax credits, which would be somehow entice a, a private developer to tap into that funding source. And then they're looking for us, originally, I think they were looking at $6 million from us. And that's when we started this whole discussion about ARPA dollars. So we were discussing potentially 3.5 to match what the county's putting in.
But this is a reminder that the Olympia and the county have already put money into purchase the property, which is not being discussed here. So they have already put
Okay. They're putting up a half a million bucks for three and a half. I'm out.
They already put in considerably more. They had purchased the property. They have, they've done a bunch of other stuff.
They purchased property or did the state purchase the property?
Olympia purchased the property. This is before the state initiative became a, came toward.
Rob?
Worth sharing that when there was conversation about us repurposing the ARPA dollars, which initially we had said we were going to use for building more supportive housing, I got phone calls and a lot of emails from constituents saying, don't do that. Spend that money on supportive housing because that's a need in our community. So I heard a lot of people, I almost never get phone calls on my city phone, but I got phone calls from people saying, we need to spend that money on working on this issue with homelessness and creating more opportunities for people to be housed. So I'm very supportive of us putting some money into this to make, to create more options, not just what we're doing with the hotel acquisition, but also this, this other spot.
Now, I'm supportive of it as well. I just think that, I'd like to have a more, much fuller discussion before committing three and a half million dollars of taxpayer money before we really have any detail. My hope would be, can't we do this, we have another work session before we have a budget meeting, before we have the final budget. Is it possible to put this on that agenda for next week's work session? I, I mean, we're, we're going to pass a budget and we're talking about three and a half million dollars, which is not, you know, it's not nothing. It's a significant amount of money. Before I commit the people's money, because, you know, remember, this isn't our money, it's the people's money, I like to know what we're spending it on.
Think we can do that presentation like in 30 minutes?
I think it could be 15-minute presentation. I think it could be 15-minute presentation and 15-minute question answer, if there's question and answer. And I can reach out to our partners and see if they can be available.
That'd be great. Thank you.
But again, it's just earmarking the money for a later date where we take action again, right? But we will have to take action again at some point.
Yes, but, yes.
So I, I, I look back at where we were two years ago, and when, when we were getting, all of us, a lot of emails about homelessness, guys with machetes, camping out in front of jewelry stores and these types of things. And fortunately, at that time, we were to come up, able to come up with a plan and put together some teams, like the mobile outreach team. And, and I noticed that those, those emails started going down, and I dug into it and found out that, you know, those guys were going out and talking to the people, seeing them on a daily basis, which is, you know, these guys, these are people that wanted to live off the grid, so they didn't really want to see people on a daily basis. I thought the plan was genius. And I think it was, I thought it was genius because it worked. And so, you know, here we are, fast forward, you know, 18, 19, 20 months, and I, I feel like if we, if we let off the gas at this point, you know, do, do we, do we slide backwards? Do we, do we end up back where we were?
I think everyone's in, I think this entire council's, and we've always voiced our support for more permanent supportive housing. The question is, is the, is the timing question, which I understand where you're coming from, Councilmember Greenstein. You know, I'm comfortable with, with sort of earmarking this money, but I think we should get a presentation as soon as possible as well. I don't think it will slow anything up if we, if we say it now or we do it at the final budget, you know, in two weeks from now. I don't think it makes that big of a difference, but.
We wouldn't do any today, we wouldn't get action today.
Yeah, we'd be on the final.
You're not looking for any action today.
No, no.
Yeah, I mean, so I think we should include it in the budget, and I'd like to hear more about it before voting.
Yeah, just procedure. We've talked about it. I was trying to get direction. If we're going to do that, it makes sense to put it in this upcoming budget.
Oh, no, I think, I think we're all in agreement there. Again, I'm not, I'm not trying to say don't support the idea. I've, from day one, I've supported more, more permanent supportive housing. I think that's what the community needs. Again, I'd just like to know where the money's going.
Sure.
Give a little bit of detail on this, Meg.
I think, I think it's fair. Okay. Is there any other direction?
I wanted to follow up on Mr. Moreno's comments from earlier, and just, is there a way of making it easier for folks to identify the ways in which Lacey is leaning in on climate action? Because we do have money allocated in different parts of the budget, but, you know, we have, it may be kind of spread out hard to find, like $200,000 for replacement of LED lighting, or $500,000 for installation of EV chargers. We have these buckets of money that we've set aside to do this work, but is there a way of making it easier for residents of Lacey and the county to see the work we're doing? And I think there may even be other things. You know, we're, we're investing in the electrification of our fleet, right? We're purchasing EV vehicles for our fleet. So I know that Lacey's doing things, but I think it's good feedback that if it's hard for someone who gets paid to do this to find the ways in which we're investing in this action, maybe we could make it a little easier to see.
I agree. I think that's good information for future budgets. And I think what we'll have going forward is a person dedicated to doing this. The other thing that I want to say, especially when it comes to this issue, is that the federal government is making a huge investment in this. They call it the Inflation Reduction Act. What it really is, is the ability for residents of Lacey, even renters in Lacey, to get almost $16,000 in direct reimbursements for a whole host of things that they can do to improve their home and be more energy efficient. With the National League of Cities, what they are recommending is how do you put your residents in touch with all these programs that are coming out? And what they recommend is have a dedicated person that comes up with a plan that can push out information that can get these dollars on their streets. And the cities that are, you know, be successful in this will be the cities that have really good communication between the, the city and their residents on getting out information that's really easy to understand. And, and we'll see, you know, potentially millions of dollars come through this region if we can all work collaboratively and have easy to understand, step by step, this is what you need to do, and, and you can get directly reimbursed by the government. I mean, we've never seen this type of investment. So the dollars are finally there, and now it's about putting together good information so we can get those dollars to work in our communities. So that's my two cents about that.
Is that something you think we should partner with the climate mitigation?
I think the, there's, I mean, I think there's a bunch of partnerships that we need to explore on making sure we can put our residents in touch with those dollars as, as easily as possible. And I think we have great partnerships, you know, regional partnerships, so on and so forth. So I'm, I'm looking forward to it, and I'm looking forward to some of these projects getting done in our communities and making a big difference.
And if memory serves, one of the other positions we've added either in this budget or really recently during the budget amendment process is a grants position, right? And so in addition to that climate project position, or that person who's going to be in charge of climate mitigation, we've got a grants position, and these are, what you're talking about is a bunch of federal grants that we can just reach out and hitch our wagon to that star, bring some of that money into Lacey.
I agree. Is there anything else about this 2023 budget? And I'm going to close this final 2023 budget hearing. Okay, next up on our agenda is under resolutions, the Resolution 1123, the Social Security Coverage Troy.
Great, thank you. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Before you're, before you tonight, under consideration is a resolution relating to the city's social security coverage and benefits. In late October this year, I was contacted by the Washington State Social Security Coordinator about an administrative error of our application, our original application for social security coverage back in 1967. This really is, amounts to a corrective housekeeping change. But I do want to say that during this correction period, there will not be any impact to any employees' current, past, or futures social security coverage. But technically, right now, we, as a city, we're not eligible for social security coverage. But again, it's an administrative error more than anything. And at, at the center of the error is a, a conflict of the date in which the city applied for the state PERS, the Public Employees Retirement System, and the date that it applied for absolute coverage under the Social Security Act. The basic rule is employees that are covered under a pension program are not eligible for social security. So it's very critical, that timing element is very critical. As we became an incorporated city back in December of 1966, we started, of course, to hire employees and to go through these different exercises in which to get employees' benefits. The, the date happens to be the same, which is not deemed before. So at the time, we applied for social security coverage. Since the date of our joining of the state PERS system, that was not prior to our coverage. So we needed to really fix that. The resolution before you does exactly that, or at least starts the process. So the resolution before you tonight is very similar to ordinance number 15, so the 15th ordinance adopted by the city. It's basically the same with the one important exception of that effective date. This changes that effective date to February 28, 1967, one day prior to the city joining the state PERS system on March 1, 1967. So if the council does adopt this resolution, it will authorize the city manager to start that process, which will be to execute a new agreement to join social security effective, again, February 28, 1967. There is a, a pretty long timeline of other administrative actions we need to take, all quite simple. We'll, of course, start that process. We expect this will take us well into 2023 before we finally get all of this fixed and approved. I will point out to the council that once that process runs its course, we will ask the council for one final action related to this, and that is to change the Lacey Municipal Code. We do have a chapter that specifically addresses social security. Of course, it says March 1st, so once we have that February 28 date recognized by both the state and the social security administration, we will again ask the city council to make a change to that date. We'll, of course, make that February 28th, and then we will be complete. So the action requested of you is to adopt this resolution, authorizing the city manager to sign a new agreement with the state, thus starting this administrative fix.
I would move to adopt Resolution 1123, authorizing an agreement with the Washington, state of Washington, related to social security coverage and for eligible employees.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
This is what bureaucratic dreams are made of.
Yeah. This is what you call a waste of government time, actually. But we've been collecting it this whole entire time. It's, it's a one-day difference, and we have to go through all these steps. It's like, yeah, okay. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded to adopt this resolution. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. Next up is Resolution 1124, the vendor roster.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council. I am Ashley Smith, City's Design and Construction Manager, and I'm here tonight to present to you the proposed Resolution 1096 to adopt use of the MRC vendor roster. There'll be two requests for motions here for the resolution and related ordinance, but I'll pause in between those. Okay, so the Municipal Research Service Center, or MRSC, is a service provided to the city to allow us to use pre-solicited rosters for vendors and contractors, as well as professional services. The city already utilizes the small works roster and consultant roster as previously adopted. And this proposed Resolution 1124 would authorize use of the, the new vendor roster in addition to that. And there's no additional cost for use of this roster since we already have a subscription for this service. The vendor roster includes additional businesses that provide product sales, equipment, minor repairs, those types of things. This is a small sample of an exhaustive list of services available on the MRSC vendor roster. And this slide is to show how we currently notify contractors and vendors of the applicability of our MRSC roster and how they can become a member and be solicited for those services. So in addition to what we supply on the small works roster section of the city's website, we would add another section for the vendor roster to invite those vendors to participate moving forward. So the ask tonight is for council to adopt proposed Resolution 1124 to allow use of the MRSC vendor roster.
I would move to adopt Resolution Number 1124, allowing use of the vendor roster process.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. Now on to ordinance 1630.
Thank you. Okay, LMC Chapter 2.72, which relates to public property acquisition or city procurement, was last updated in 1988. Obviously, a lot has changed since then, and the outdated processes inhibit staff's ability to work effectively and efficiently to procure materials, goods, and services for the city. Proposed Ordinance 1630 would repeal the, the existing Resolution 624 and Chapter 2.72 of the LMC and adopt a new revised version. The city manager, with assistance of the Finance Director, will revise the city's procurement policy moving forward to be implemented at a later date. And, let's see. Currently, to give you a little insight on what the LMC holds is related to procurement. Any supply material, equipment, or services over $15,000 require formal sealed competitive bids. That may have been appropriate threshold in 1988, but today it is extremely limiting in our ability to perform work for the city. In addition to that, one of the other portions that would be now applicable is 2.72030, which encourages staff to order equipment supplies in bulk when available to provide greater efficiency and lower costs for the city. So summary of the proposed, excuse me, ordinance 1630 would revise Section 050 of Chapter 2.72 to defer city procurement to policy moving forward as prescribed by the city manager and Finance Director. At this point, the proposal for council is to adopt ordinance 1630.
I would move that we adopt ordinance Number 1630, amending LMC 2.72 related to public property acquisition.
Second.
It's been moved for seconded discussion. Mr. City Manager, when, obviously what this is doing is directing you to come up with the policy. When do you think you'll, you'll do that and report back out to this council? Or are you going to report it to Finance? Or how, what this is going to look like going forward?
Right, good question. So two things I just want to emphasize. One is those existing limits remain in place, so nothing has changed with this action. That's before you tonight. Secondarily, we hope to either bring it to you in the Finance Committee meeting in December. If we can't make the December Finance Committee meeting, it would be in January. So staff has a couple more meetings to fully vet the policy, and then we'd like to share that as we discuss at the last Finance Committee.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded to adopt the ordinance 1630, amending LMC 2.72 relating to public property acquisition. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. Thanks. Now, now we're on to ordinance 1630. Wait, no, that, we've gone through everything. Yep, so now we're on to Mayor's Report. I just have a quick report out. The, the, as, as this council knows, we have picked GMP to do our next search for our, our city manager. Give this council a quick update on that process. The, the selection committee is going to be meeting tomorrow with GMP to go over the whole calendar of events of what's coming up. So we're going to talk to them tomorrow at 4:30. They're going to inform us, and we can give back a little input about what that calendar looks like, let you know. The first thing that's going to happen is they're going to reach out to each council member and do an interview to talk about what the profile needs, what we're going to recommend as a profile of what we're looking for for our next city manager. And so I will, we will obviously have a little better, more information to give to the full council after we get an update tomorrow about this calendar. We have, well, I'm sure we'll have a few feedbacks, but I will keep this council, of course, informed as we go through this process. And we're looking forward to a very collaborative effort to pick our next amazing city manager for the city of Lacey. So I will have a little more information tomorrow at a later afternoon. And that is my report. City Manager?
Well, Mayor and City Council, we have a couple items before you. Ashley's still here because she's on, next on the agenda. We have an amendment to our personal, professional services agreement for design services for the new police station. So Ashley will provide the background on that topic.
All right. We have before you tonight an amendment to the professional services agreement for KMB Architects for design, continued design of the new police facility. As council is aware, we've gone through a lengthy process to date, going back to 2019 to complete a space needs analysis and preliminary design of the new facility. And this proposed amendment would continue to design up to and including construction documents. So speaking to the work that's been completed to date, council is aware that the existing facility has been deemed inadequate and undersized, leading up to this point. The new proposed facility is approximately 43,000 square feet, a multi-level facility in comparison to the existing. in comparison to the existing 18,000 square feet, square foot facility that they occupy today. At this point, the schematic design of the new facility has been completed to include the floor plans, site design, and feasibility with some preliminary cost estimates, as you're aware. And the amendment to this contract would take us from the 30% design, schematic design, into bidding and contract award in early 2024. The proposed amendment is in the amount of $2,446,421, and that would include complete design documents, excuse me, construction documents for both the facility and the main facility and the future training facility that is not intended to be constructed with this package. At this point, happy to answer. Any questions council may have?
Can I get a motion?
I would move to approve an amendment to the professional services agreement with K&amp;B Architects.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? We've been talking about this a lot lately.
Are we, so if we design both of them, is it, do we have to design both of them right now, or is that just a cost-saving measure, or if it's something that's going to be built in the future and we design this, and I'm just kind of trying to figure out, do we need to spend the money for, to design a training facility that we're not ready to build?
That's a great question, Deputy Mayor. A few reasons for designing the additional facility now, the training facility. One is when we have those construction documents completed and can submit them for site plan review, that project will be vested with the current guidelines, standards, and codes for future build. In addition to that, we are proposing including that facility as an additive or alternate in the construction package. Should bids come in favorably, or the budget allows construction of that portion of the work, then we could proceed with the training facility because the design would be ready as well.
Understood.
Any other discussion? It's been moved and seconded to amend the professional services agreement with K&amp;B Architects. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? That motion unanimously carries.
Thanks, Ashley. The next agenda item before you is our federal and state legislative priorities agenda, and our Assistant City Manager is going to provide the background on that.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. So, we are here tonight to take a look again at the federal legislative priorities for 2023, as well as the state legislative priorities for 2023. Annually, the city of Lacey establishes priorities for the upcoming legislative sessions, and so we want to just go through what the priorities are again, and the recommendation tonight is to adopt both the federal priorities as well as the state priorities, and in addition, the newcomer, the state manual for 2023. So, we have our 2023 federal legislative priorities, and you can see that the priorities for community projects include the College Street Corridor Safety Improvement Project, Emergency Operations Center Project, the Septic to Sewer Conversion Program, as well as a number of policy positions, including supporting the I-5 corridor from Tom Water to Mounds Road and the Nisqually River Delta, support the Save Our Sound Act, support Build America by America, support a national housing and homeless outreach strategy to help communities address an ongoing and growing crisis of unsheltered populations, and to support the Defense Community Infrastructure Program. Switching over to our 2023 state legislative priorities. And Troy, if you could show the next document, please. On our 2023 state legislative priorities, which is attachment to in your packet tonight, includes capital budget requests, and I'm sure we're going to get this up here in just a second, but the first one is for accessibility improvements at the new Greg Huyo Park. This includes a walkway and an inclusive playground, as well as an emergency operations center in the new police station to help support the construction of that with, construction and going back to our federal priorities, some new technologies in the emergency operations center. We have some policy and program requests as well, continue, including taking a stance on the commercial airport siting, also looking for long-term funding solutions to continue to support Rites of Way Initiative housing acquisitions, and continuing to focus, along with our federal priorities, on the I-5 corridor between Mounds Road and Tom Water, and then also addressing law enforcement vehicle pursuits. I mentioned earlier that we have a new addition this year, which is the 2023 Legislative Manual, and in that manual, the intent is really to establish a agreed-upon broad sense of policies beyond just our policy documents, so the top couple of items, but to really kind of try to capture broad sentiments on policies, and this really allows the city to be more responsive during the legislative session at the state level. I do want to note that in the 2023 state manual, there was an addition under climate resources and tools, and you can find that on Page Five or Page 125 of your packet tonight, and that was really just an expansion to include some additional language on supporting electrification programs and supporting medium and heavy-duty vehicle electrification. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council might have on the legislative priorities. Our recommendation is to adopt the 2023 federal legislative priorities, as well as the 2023 state legislative priorities and state manual.
Can that be done with one motion, or do we need two separate motions for that?
It can be done with one motion.
In that case, I would move to adopt the 2023 federal legislative priorities, as well as the 2023 state legislative priorities and legislative manual.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. I know I'm really late to the game here, and I haven't, I know I should have probably brought this up earlier, but it's been something I've been working on personally, and I had just recently talked to the Association of Washington Cities, their federal advocacy committee yesterday, and it's something I've been talking at the National League of Cities, but there is a new federal priority that I think that maybe we can all weigh on, and I've already weighed on personally. It's called the Helper Act, and what the Helper Act would do, it would be, it would support our police and correction officers, firefighters, EMTs, and paramedics, and also pre-K through 12 teachers by providing a VA-style home loan program. It would provide 100% financing and eliminate monthly mortgage insurance payments for one-time home purchases, in addition to making housing more affordable for these public servants. It'd serve as an incentive that would help keep our city, help our city recruit and retain these critical workers. It's called the Helper Act. I'm the second, I guess, mayor in the state that was the early endorser of this, but as I've been talking about, the Helper Act at the National League of Cities level and Association of Washington Cities level, it's getting pretty, a lot of support, and so I've endorsed this personally. I can send some more information out to this council about it, but it would be my recommendation that we add this to our federal priorities, just to have support the passage of the Helper Act, but that's open for some discussion, and I know it's sort of way last minute. It's been something I've been working on personally, but I think at this point, I've talked to enough elected officials who've all been very supportive of it. I think it's worth having our full council support, and just besides myself personally, but I'm open up for discussion.
It sounds like something that, it almost sounds like a no-brainer, but I'd want to see it before I was willing to weigh in, support or not. I mean, typically, federal legislation has a lot of stuff in it that isn't part of what you're actually supporting, so I need to see the detail before I could possibly get behind something, especially at the federal level.
Sure. Well, then, what I'd suggest is, let's move to pass this as presented. I can send out the information to this council. Scott, do you have something you want to add to this?
I'm just curious if that benefit is open to other critical positions. For example, in our water system, we're, you know, looking for two control tanks, which are extremely critical positions in order to provide drinking water to the citizens of the community. So, is that, is that benefit available to other critical positions as well?
Police, correction officers, firefighters, EMT, paramedics, teachers. That's who it's set up for right now. You bring up a good point. Talking about public servants in need of incentivizing, some incentives to attract more public servants to, this is obviously something that was set up originally for our police and firefighters. Then, as it's, they start talking about it, they said, "Well, what about, about EMTs?" "Oh, yeah, well, EMT, of course." "Well, what about teachers?" "Well, of course, teachers as well." And so, what it's done is just added that. Through my conversations with AWC and NLC, they've also said, "What about mental health professionals?" "Well, all right, we all need more mental health professionals." It'll be interesting to see how this goes along. I think there's a really good argument for a lot of different public servants out there, and this is obviously a pretty big incentive, right, to be able to go through, have your own VA-style home loan program where you can get a loan that you don't have to get, that's 100% covered. That sounds like a pretty good incentive to me. Obviously, it's still in the, right, that this act has been supported by 200 different professional organizations and has pretty broad bipartisan early support, and it's bipartisan so far, the support. So, I am planning on reaching out to our federal delegation just to talk to them a little bit about, and see where they are at in supporting it. Of course, we have a long ways between it being introduced, voted on, and the final, what comes out to the final end. I just, I felt I'd been a part of this pretty early on, and I've, I realized that we need more incentives for public servants, and I feel like this is a pretty good incentive for our public servants, so.
It's called the Helper Act?
It's called the Helper Act, and I'm happy to send the letter I've sent to our federal delegation and the information I have to this council, but I agree, let's, I have no problem adopting our 2023 federal legislative priorities agenda and our state legislative priorities agenda and legislative manual. If there's some agreement in the future about this, we can always come back and quickly add it on to our federal.
Just quick to mention, because I just went through the VA loan process, it now goes up to $1.2 million. So, it's a huge incentive, especially for teachers who, you know, we're always saying, you know, retaining and attracting new teachers.
Yeah.
Trying to come up with a down payment of 20% on, you know, a $300, $400, $500,000 house is huge, so.
As you know, I brought this up in the Military Communities Council, and I passed that on to their staff member, and they're going to be sending it out. So, well, you know, I hope the federal government can come up with some sort of program. We'll see who's actually covering the end, and is it 100% financing or all that other stuff.
I'd like to see it because, you know, the, I'm curious how they're getting away with no MI. That's going to be fun to see, because it doesn't appear that VA has MI, but it does have MI. They call it a 25% guarantee, and it's broken out over 360 months, so it's, it's there, and it happens. It just has a different look to it.
Yeah, but Scott brought up a great point, because, you know, public safety, this is minded, right, with firefighters, police officers, EMTs, that stuff. Drinking water is a public safety issue. One of the biggest ones, I mean, so.
Well, how about, like I said, I'm happy adopting this as recommended. I'll send some more information out, and we can go from there. Okay, then it's been moved and seconded to adopt our federal legislative priorities agenda and our state legislative priorities agenda and the legislative manual. Is there any other discussion? And all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. Thank you, Shannon, for doing all this work. We really appreciate it.
So, one final item before council is MOU for hotel acquisition. You've been briefed on this before, but Rick's going to provide some additional details, and the MOU is in your packet regarding this resource for permit-supported housing in the future.
Good evening, Mayor and the City Council. As Scott mentioned, for you is a request to take action, to authorize a city manager to sign a memorandum of understanding between the city of Lacey, Thurston County, and the Washington Department of Commerce for the acquisition, rehabilitation, and operation of a hotel property located at 8200 Quinault Drive Northeast in Lacey for enhanced shelter purposes with the long-term goal of converting it to permit-supported housing. A little bit of background on where this came from, we mentioned it earlier in our conversation, we're on the budget, is last May, the State of Washington, the Governor's Office directed initiative to start addressing unsanctioned encampments within the I-5 right-of-way in multiple counties throughout the state, and one of those counties being Thurston County. They wanted to start relocating individuals that are currently in the right-of-way, given the option of housing or shelter that's suitable for them, and as they wanted to do this rather quickly, the governor directed the Washington State Patrol, the Washington State Department of Transportation, and the Department of Commerce to work with the local jurisdictions in that effort. As we started meeting at the staff level with the state agencies and identified that we do not have shelter resources or other type of housing options available to meet that immediate need, that spurred the development of a, the initial MOU, the umbrella MOU, as we refer to it, between all the state agencies and the local jurisdictions here in Thurston County, to work together to develop and identify projects that could accommodate the relocation of individual into suitable housing, or give them the choice for suitable housing or shelter options, and with that, the state would come with some dollars to help bring those type of projects online. Ultimately, the Department of Commerce has allocated about $37 million for the Thurston region in I-5 corridor, and there are several projects in Olympia, as well as the city of Lacey, to try to bring on these resources as quickly as possible. Mentioned earlier that Franz Anderson Road Tiny Home Village of 50 units is one of those projects, as well as providing support and reserving beds at the Unity Commons Shelter, and then also providing funding for direct outreach. So, as one of those projects that was identified was the acquisition of the hotel on Quinault Drive. With that acquisition, the, the state is applying $15 million for the purchase and $5 million for its ultimate rehabilitation, and then into a remodel into enhanced shelter services, and then also providing two years of funding for operations and management. So, this MOU articulates that agreement for this project, the next step. The key points of those agreements, as I mentioned, identifies the state providing the $15 million and the $5 million in renovation in a contract through the low-income housing, with the Low Income Housing Institute, who is the, will be the purchaser of the property and operator. They're commonly known as LEHI. Part of that MOU identifies also that there will be a restrictive covenant on the property, that it will operate as a enhanced shelter or under the intended purposes of conversion to permit-supported housing for a period of 40 years, and then the MOU also specifies that the state will provide the two years of operation funding initially, and that that will come through Thurston County, and Thurston County will contract with LEHI for the operation and maintenance and manage that contract. And part of the MOU also identifies that the specifics of the contract for operations of the facility will also be coordinated with the city of Lacey with our input to make sure that we are coordinating that effort and that we don't have an impact to our services or our surrounding properties. The other part of the MOU, it's, I think it's fairly key, is it also identifies the formation of the Operations Council, and this Operations Council will be, have representatives from Department of Commerce, LEHI, the operator, this Thurston County, as well as the city of Lacey, to have oversight of operations, deal with issues that emerge and address them, and ensure that the contract terms are being met through the operation and maintenance as well. And then also, the MOU also specifies the long-term goal of converting the facility into permit-supported housing, and it specified that within two to five years, that LEHI would make good faith effort to apply for dollars for conversion to permit-supported housing, and also in that agreement identifies that Commerce make good faith efforts to fund those projects, as well as the Regional Housing Council making that good faith effort to identify local resources that can help with leveraging and funding as well. And then, the other key pieces of the MOU is also identified who would be able to be placed in the enhanced shelter and long-term permit-supported housing, and there's a list of priority of individuals. Currently, there are about 25 individuals that are living at the, at the hotel that are placed there by either funding from the Housing and Essential Needs Program or Essential Needs Program or rapid rehousing programs. And so the first priority is not to displace those individuals with the purchase of the hotel. So that is the first individuals that'll be able to stay and maintain shelter there as it is transitioned into enhanced shelter. One thing I do want to mention, though, on that is, this facility will be for single adults. And so there are currently some individuals that are there with, you know, kids that are placed there, families. And with this, we'll make every effort to relocate them to suitable shelter, not be displaced out and without shelter. Yes?
Quick question on that, Rick. Will the people that are currently there be able to stay there during the remodel and renovation work as well?
That that will be the goal, but that's going to need to be worked out with LEHI and them working with those individuals. Because one of the pieces with having the state dollars come in for this acquisition is there's going to have to be hazardous testing, hazardous substance tests that have to be performed and any remediation. So that's also going to play into this as well. But we want to try to minimize the impact of those individuals and try to keep them in place as best we can, if not find temporary locations until they can come back. Second priority, are persons located currently located in the right-of-way, as we go out and do outreach, you know, give them the option, you know, for shelter. If they take that, those will be first priorities to locate within in the facility. Third priority will be working through the local coordinated entry system and placement of individuals through that network. Fourth priority are for individuals that are displaced from unsanctioned encampments in the City of Lacey or Thurston County, that there could be a direct referral in that to that facility that would help facilitate with our efforts with the Community Resource Unit and Mobile Outreach Team. So that would be a resource for the City of Lacey as well as the county. And then the fourth and fifth are other populations based on written approval by Thurston County. And the fifth one being that if the facility, one of the concerns we have is we want to make sure this is a local asset that is meeting the needs locally, that that we wouldn't have individuals from across state be placed there because of other issues elsewhere. And that could be through the state process or LEHI with their network. So we wanted to ensure that this was first a priority asset for local needs. So there's a provision in there that says that if the facility's operating at less than 75% capacity, then that opens up the opportunity for placement of other individuals from other locales, subject to local approval. And so what part of the reason is, is we want to ensure that it's a local resource, but also, too, if it's not running at full capacity, it is a resource that has some state funds tied to it. So that is a quick overview of the MOU and the key points. This was fully briefed with the City Council at the work session on November 10. And then after that work session, we have held a public information forum on November 16. One of the things we really wanted to do is we wanted to do some outreach to the local surrounding properties and businesses, as well as the community at large. We have contacted individual property owners and businesses. We've also done direct mailings. We've done a lot of outreach through social media, put together frequently asked questions and overview of the project. And we held this informational forum on Wednesday, the 16th. We held it in two sessions, a three o'clock session and a six o'clock session to try to get as broad as of access to as many people as possible. We didn't have a lot of people in-person attendance, but we did have several. And through the question and answers, I think we got all the information out there, as well as heard some of those concerns, and addressed a lot of those concerns through the getting that information to them. And then about an hour and a half for each session. And then there's quite a few individuals that did view the forums on the YouTube Live and Facebook Live. And so with that, we did a lot of that outreach. And so there's a lot of information out in the community about this this action moving forward. And then finally, once this MOU is authorized to be executed, then that will allow Department of Commerce to enter the contract with LEHI for the acquisition, which is scheduled to close sometime in January. And then it will start that process of rehabilitation and could be open for operation as soon as this the spring. Any other entertaining questions that the council may have?
Can I get a motion, please?
Move to authorize city manager to sign acquisition, rehabilitation, and operation of the 8200 Quinault Drive Northeast in Lacey, Washington for Rights of Way Initiative Memorandum of Understanding that allows for a partnership with the State of Washington to acquire, remodel, and operate as a hotel and enhanced shelter for housing resources to address homelessness.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Thank you for your comments.
I didn't want to make the motion because it was too long.
So I did have one question about, you know, ensuring and policing the those six items. I when I read that, I thought, you know, how are we going to make that stick? You know, when I was looking at number two, it says persons living in the state's right-of-way only in Thurston County. And then I got down to, you know, the other one and said, hey, you know, if we're only at 75%, then, you know, maybe people from other places can come. And, and, you know, I, as I think about, I just, I don't, how do we, how do we make that stick?
Yeah. Can you talk a little bit about who's going to be responsible from getting people into this? I mean, who's going to be taking people there? Is it, is there going to be a process? Is it State Patrol? Is it who?
So, and thinking of, as I concluded my original presentation, I realized I didn't talk about next steps, too. So another key next step is to develop the operation and management contract with LEHI, which will also provisions of this MOU will be passed into that contract as well. And so there's a couple of questions there, so I'll try to cover them both. For oversight, that's where the operational council comes in. And so we want to make sure there's good communication and coordination ongoing. And so we'll have a representation on that council for the day-to-day activities, also to ensure that the provisions of these MOUs and these these contract agreements are being met. And if there are things that come up that need to be addressed and be able to know what that is and potentially come back to council if we need to look at something that that needs to be changed. Don't anticipate that. But that's really where the operational council comes in, is that oversight with the MOU and the agreements. In terms of who are going to be placing individuals, it's going to be through outreach workers. We already know that the individuals already live in there. We're connecting with them, or the outreach workers are currently connecting with them. And so those individuals in the first step are pretty well identified. As workers out reach out, social workers working with those that are currently in the I-5 right-of-way, it can be a number of individuals. It could be, you know, nonprofit service providers. It could be City of Olympia outreach assets, could be RCRU or MOT team as well, all conducting that research. And then it's coordinating their, if they're willing to take that option for shelter, then it's generally going to go through our local coordinated entry system. So it's documented and and then referred into the facility. Once they go into the facility, LEHI will be operating that with, you know, going through an initial assessment with those individuals, talking about the program there, the rules and code of conduct as they get placed there, so that they have, as they go into this facility, those individuals are understanding what type of facility they're going into and what are the expectations of them are. So hopefully, I kind of jumped between both questions, but hopefully I answered those for you.
Go ahead.
Really, just two comments. One, I went with city manager and Rick and the chief and took a tour of another facility that LEHI operates that's very similar to this. And I got to say that, and you all know how skeptical I've been in some of this, they were, they did, I thought they were doing a really good job. I thought the the way they were handling it, the way the place looked, the way they kept it with their code of conduct and actually enforcing it, I have a lot of confidence, actually, that LEHI will do a good job on this. I'm, that's, I think that's really important. And the second comment I wanted to make, I really just want to thank Rick and the city manager for making sure that we have a seat at that Operations Council. You know, keep in mind that the state is buying this property, and the contract is with the county and LEHI. We're really not a party to the contract. So the fact that we have a seat at that operations table, to me, is critically important, because it is in our city. It is going to affect our residents and our citizens. So, thank you.
I agree. So sort of along those lines. So it looks like LEHI is going to be creating a community advisory group. They're responsible for doing the community advisory group, will be the surrounding businesses, and they reach out to other community members and people. The Operations Council, how are we even figure out who's going to be sitting on the Operations Council? Is it just staff, or is it also going to be, who's going to be on the Operations Council?
The Operations Council is going to be staff, the staff level. So it'll be somebody from, you know, housing coordinator or a position from administration. Also, there'll be a spot for somebody from the CRU team, because we want to make sure that there's that direct communication with our folks that are working out on the ground with individuals, too, because that's where we get into some of those off-site impacts that we want to address and address quickly. So it'll be staff representation, and then, of course, communication and updates coming back to the council and as operations go on through the year. The other thing, when you mentioned the community act or the community advisory group, this is another key piece that LEHI has done, and is a big part of the contract, is that they will form that. And that group is intent to be populated by not only surrounding business owners and property owners, but also community members, also the city staff, service providers, that people can meet on a monthly basis, talk about the issues, get to know more about the operations there at the facility, if there are issues offsite, to be able to address those and raise those and basically create that good neighbor relationship with the community. And then that will be something that will can be, can you not inform by LEHI? And then talking to Josh Cashel for LEHI, even at the forum, they're already getting requests to be a part of that community advisory group from the community as well. So there's been some interest, and it's already grown quite a bit. Is there any other discussion?
I'd like to add my thanks and great relief that this project, which has taken so long to come together, is actually starting to come together now. And Rick and company have just done a marvelous job. So thank you so much.
I did have one last question. Is there a timeline on the remodel?
So once the property closes, then they'll start going into the remediation process, and then after that, right into the remodel process. And there is urgency to go as quickly as possible. And as they get closer to closing, LEHI staff will be beaten with City of Lacey building staff to start working out what those tenant improvement requirements are going to be for that. Also, there's going to be site security, perimeter fencing and gate controlled access, and that stuff, too, is going to be worked out and gets queued up so that it can go as quickly as possible once the project closes, too. So that those permitting processes are already starting to run concurrently. And again, it's something that could be operational this the spring.
Okay. Well, I just want to add that I think it's this, as soon as we can get this, the better. Obviously, we know as a council, there's been issues associated with this particular property as we speak. And so I think what it needs is oversight. It needs a good process. And LEHI has proven that they can do this very, very well. And so without this, we would continue to see a lot of issues at that at that property. So this is a big, I think, a big win for our community, City of Lacey, and obviously people who are currently in the right-of-way and looking to get into permanent supportive housing. So it's been moved and seconded to authorize the city manager to sign this MOU. I'll pay over that motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. Anything else, Mr. City Manager? Then on to standing general committees. I'm up first with the Finance and Economic Development Committee meeting that met way back in October 25. And it met, we met such a long time ago that we've gone through every single one of these items, except for for one, which is the portfolio strategy discussion. And even since we met in October, we've had another discussion at our last finance meeting that even updates this information. So instead of sort of reporting on this information, I guess what the long, long story short is that obviously, the city has a lot in investments. What's happened is the change in rates has gone so dramatic, it really makes sense for us to look at some of our liquid assets and invest them into other long, longer-term investments. I mean, Troy, do you want to add anything real quick to this? Since I'm putting, I'll put you on the spot?
No, I think you summed it up pretty well. That's, we're in a market situation where we're seeing very, very high yields, and we just want to be able to take advantage of that. As the mayor said, taking those liquid funds, investing in a little bit longer term, like in that three to five-year range. We're also looking at a little bit shorter than that, actually, just this week. As the mayor said, we had some additional new information come up at the last finance committee. But in terms of cash flow, to give the council some confidence that we will be able to pay the bills, we will be able to meet our commitments, we have about $54 million that's going to mature in the next 12 months. So there's plenty of opportunity to adjust the cash flow if need be. So I do want to make sure the council feels confident in that.
And that's my report. General Government and Public Safety.
General Government and Public Safety met the same day, actually, 10:25. We had a three-item agenda. First was a discussion about the Midtown Utility Box Wraps. So we just got an update on that. They should, the utility boxes in Midtown should have their wraps on them, which will have the logo and some other pictures and things. They look really good, the pictures that we saw. That should launch in early '23. The second item was an update on the 2022 property retention by our police department. Really, there was only one new item added to the retention this year, and that was a pair of bolt cutters. So pretty insignificant there. And then the last item on the agenda was a little disturbing, actually, but it was an update on the vandalism and crime that's happened in some of our parks. And Jamie Oakland gave us a really thorough report and went over all the details of the graffiti, some of the theft, some of the other damage. But the bottom line is, it took 690 hours of City of Lacey staff time to clean up and repair the damage that was done. That's a significant cost to the city. I mean, really, just completely unacceptable. It's up over 200% from the average of the last five years. So, you know, I would just, the public should really pay attention. If they see anything like that going on, please call the police. You know, we all pay for those parks. Every one of you, every citizen in the city is paying for those parks. And we should be able to enjoy them without that kind of thing happening. So I would encourage people, if you see something, please call and report it. And that is my report.
Thank you for that. That was discouraging to see that. And of course, what we've tried to do at Lacey is get more cameras into our parks, and that will hopefully deter some of this. But you can't have a camera on every single thing. So it's just, it's infuriating that people will put graffiti and damage our parks and other public property. Transportation Committee.
Transportation met November 1. Our agenda item was just one, I believe, and it was basically the State of the Streets report is going to go from annual to bi-annual. This is not going to change the cost or anything. It actually reduces the cost and promotes a higher ratio of time spent on valuable data. I think this is kind of a, I was thinking about it, and I was, I thought, well, maybe this is this kind of one of those growth things. You know, we have more lane miles than we've ever had before. And we, you know, we could use some more staff. But we, I think it's going to be one of those, you know, I think it'll be a benefit. The cost goes down, but at the same time, the annual report may not need to be as annual, an annual report. And I think we'll be able to get what we need, the information we need out of a bi-annual report. So that is my report.
Utilities Committee.
That was Ed.
That was Ed. And we'll put off our Utilities Committee till our next meeting, unless someone, who else was there? Anyone want to, Councilmember Cox, do you want to, since you're the only one there who was there that day, you want, was there anything?
I know. I totally put you on the spot.
We had reports on primarily the sewer lift stations and the planned work to update, rehabilitate rehabilitate these. Staff highlighted the overall operations and then reviewed detail the various types of lift stations that the city operates. We have a total of 46, each of which houses two to four pumps. And last year, the city lift stations pumped nearly 864 million gallons of wastewater. So those pumps do a lot of work. And then Ashley Smith gave us an utility construction update. There's a number of projects, including abandonment of one lift station, replacing another, constructing one. The Terry Cargill Reservoir, they estimate completion in the second quarter of 2024. And there are other assorted projects, so.
Great. Now on to boards, commissions, community reports. I'm up first, but I do not have a report. So deputy mayor?
One quick report from the EDC. Couple of agenda items. One of them is the West Bay Development Group in that, that site downtown. It was a hardell plywood manufacturing site that burned down in the 90s, is finally going to be redeveloped into, I think, about 500 units of housing. The hot topic was, of course, you know, the airport thing. We saw the same, in this meeting was the same presentation from TRPC that, that would, that we saw in our, in our work session, I think it was three Thursdays ago. And so nothing really new there, but the, no action was taken endorsing or opposing. And then the Procurement Technical Assistance Center, PTAC, and that's just an EDC program that, that provides advice to businesses seeking to comply, you know, to complete in the public, in the public sector. And so that program, last year, won 388 million in contracts, generated 3,000 jobs, and basically was responsible about, for about 600 million in economic output for the state. And the recipients or the beneficiaries of that are, there's about 1,400 clients and 30% are minority owned, 40% are women-owned, and 17% are veteran-owned. And so that program will continue for another year. And that is my report.
Yeah, the Thurston EDC on their, that PTAC, they've been really, really good about getting local businesses to compete for federal projects. So that's, they've always been very great, really good at that. So on to councilmember Cox.
All right. One report this time, and it's on the Climate Mitigation Steering Committee. The bulk of the meeting was given over to a presentation on the 2021 Thurston County greenhouse gas emissions inventory. Back in 2019, the Thurston Regional Planning Council, Thurston County, and the cities of Lacey, Olympia, and Tombwater committed to reducing climate warming greenhouse gas emissions. In doing so, we adopted two targets. The first, to achieve a 45% reduction of greenhouse gas emission levels by 2030. And the second, to achieve an 85% reduction of 2015 levels by 2050. So meeting these targets requires that our emissions be monitored across the county. Since 2010, the Thurston Climate Action Team has completed a greenhouse mission, gas emissions inventory for Thurston County. This new report extends that work and incorporates changes identified by the Climate Action Committee and the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. Total greenhouse gas emissions in 2021 in Thurston County are estimated at 2.9 million metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent. And that's about 9.8 million metric tons per person. So after several years of seeing emissions grow from 2015, it started going the other way in 2020 and 2021. They were below the 2015 baseline. However, we're still not on track to meet the 2030 and 2050 targets. The major contributors, like 90% to these emissions, are due to heating empowering homes and businesses, that's 54% of the total, and transportation, which accounts for 36%. The other remaining sectors in the inventory include water and waste, agriculture, and hydrofluorocarbons, so accounting for 10%. So while we have seen some success, you know, combined emissions from the building and energy and transportation sectors decrease some. It's not clear yet whether that decrease is attributable to the pandemic and people working from home, fewer vehicles on the road. And coming out of the pandemic, you know, how many people are going to be working from home still? I know a lot of our state agencies are trying to keep, their staffs mostly are largely working from homes. So whether or not these losses can be sustained, or losses, reductions can be sustained, remains to be seen. We will not be meeting in December, so you won't have to suffer through another one of these. And we are planning a retreat in January as we're kind of regrouping a little bit. We've got a, an advisory council that stood up and our technical team, which Rick's staff has been generously working on, has been having more meetings in between so that the larger steering committee can meet less frequently. That's my report.
Great. Councilmember Greenstein?
I have no report this evening.
Councilmember Stedman?
No report.
Councilmember Vasquez?
Couple of brief reports. Thurston Regional Planning Council meets tomorrow. We'll be reviewing the work program and also looking at grant awards and funding recommendations for the request for projects for the next year. The Inter-City Transit Authority meets on the 7th of December, and we're going to be reviewing the budget and the strategic plan for that organization. There's a lot of stuff that happens in December. Like everyone's trying to get all the really important business out of the way in December. And then ORCA meets on December 14th, and we're going to be reviewing the salary survey for that organization's staff. They're also proposing to create a personnel committee, and they invited me to join. I guess I have a set of skills that people like to have on personnel committees. And no particular report at this time for the Thurston Board of Health.
Okay. That means we've reached the end of our agenda. I was just looking at our weather report. Doesn't look like we're going to have a ton of snow between, that's on the schedule, but I don't know if, Scott, you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, no, I, you know, we, we look at multiple weather reports and you'll quite often see quite a variance in what's forecasted. But we plan for the worst and, you know, our philosophy is if there's a question of underserving or overserving, we're going to overserve. So last night, snow was forecasted. We did have people come out in the middle of the night and put down the icero because the roads were slick, it was supposed to continue to get colder. And we'll just, you know, we'll, we'll keep on the ready to respond to whatever shows up.
Great. Well, with that.
Great condition this morning. I was out and Lacey's roads were in really good condition, even with the freezing last night.
We always do a really good job. So with that, I hope everyone stays warm, stays dry. And without objection, I'll call this meeting adjourned. As always, you keep it classy, Lacey.